It's nine thirty.
All right, it's nine thirty. Appreciate everybody being here this morning. And we do have Mr. Jackson on the phone. He is not feeling well this morning. First item on the agenda is approval of July twenty twenty five monthly bills. There were no changes. Any questions? Approval of minutes, August fourth twenty twenty five, five P M. Council work session and August fourth twenty twenty five, six P M. Council meeting. Any questions? Public hearings, resolution twenty five one ninety two, approved request for restaurant retail liquor license for Laughara Zita LLC at twenty six fourteen Highway thirty from the south, Decatur, Alabama.
No changes.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, hey, Mr. Ross, Mr. Ross, I think there's something wrong with the thing. There's a picture on this couple of ways. It's getting in my ears. Sorry, I keep hearing that thing is probably crap out here right now.
All right, no changes. Any questions? All right, we debate minutes. No changes. All right, no change. Any questions on debatements? All right, resolutions, resolution twenty five two zero seven, approved fourth Avenue traffic signals engineering proposal from Morel Engineering. Any questions? Resolution twenty five two zero eight, approved new south for Kerry Matthews Architectural Services.
I'm not aware of any changes.
Hey, no changes. Any questions? All right, then we did have this addition, which we spoke about at the end of the last meeting, resolution twenty five two zero nine, revised appointment of director of planning Chad Bowman. I believe the only change was one step higher than.
One notch higher.
Yeah.
I hear they topped out, is that right?
No.
But not close.
Out of my parents, you can add five years.
Five years. Okay, and start date is the same. All right, any questions? All right, we will get started at ten o'clock.
Let us pray.
Dear Heavenly Father, God, as we come to you today, we just thank you, God, for your many blessings. God, we thank you so much, God, for this country that we live in. God, I pray that you give this council and this city, God, the knowledge, God, to lead this city the way that you see fit. God, I pray that everything we do, God, would be to your honor and glory. God, again, we thank you so much for all the men and women, God, who serve this country to keep us safe and protected. God, and we pray protection for them, God. God, again, we thank you for all that you are and for all that you do in our lives, God. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mike.
Here.
Jackson.
McMasters.
Here.
Here.
All right, first item on the agenda, or agenda-related comments. Mr. Faruki will sign in to speak.
So why didn't we have any opportunity for agenda-related comments at the last work session?
At the last work session?
Yeah.
We don't have comments at work session.
You decided that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. In the minutes, we talked about ethical standards.
Tom.
May I begin, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my home.
Ethical standards of mayoral candidates, specifically incidents that happened at the Foxwood Estates at Burning Tree. And the question of the day is, what if the planning commission chair leveraged his position for fundraising?
I'm not going to allow you to campaign at the diocese.
I'm not campaigning, sir.
Or disparage candidates or anything like that.
Okay, I didn't mention any candidate by name, but in the checks, there's $147,000 written to Pewright McInally. And Jacob, at the last special call meeting for the Cook Center, you said last week, "It's expensive to hire Blake." Now, did you know that Blake also provided some monies to one specific mayoral candidate?
No.
He has a choice to do that.
He certainly does. But if you're paying him $147,000, Mayor, last this month.
We paid for this month. Engineering firms.
To agenda-related comments, Mr. McMasters.
Excuse me, I'm asking your question.
Please.
These are basically the same for all engineering firms. Sometimes there's a lot of history that Pewright McInally has relates to the city of Kater, and it can be a lot more efficient for us to use them oftentimes. But they can't take all the work, so we spread that out. We don't get involved in who is going to do engineering work for the city. Our engineering department does cooperate. He makes those decisions.
And you approve them?
There's usually, it's approved by the city council.
You bring them up to this council?
My name is not called on roll call. I do not vote. I'm a mayor.
How did this get on the agenda, then?
I'll just give you an answer.
Okay. May I continue?
It wasn't me continuing what you started.
May I continue?
Yes.
Okay. Reference weed abatements, there are none in District Three for this last 30 days. And I offer, there's been lots of pictures and issues and people taking photos of District Three needing weed abatement. Resolution One, the traffic signal, again, Mr. Pruitt is involved in this, $12,000. Do we not have the equipment to do our own traffic studies?
I'll let him dress up when he gets it up.
Well, do we?
I don't know.
Okay, so we're going to spend $12,000, and we don't even know if we've got the equipment. Well, we could have done this at the work session, Jacob, that's my point. Google suggests that a cumulative count recorder would cost $900. A road tube starter kit would be $963, and road tubes to replace would be $152, significantly cheaper than the $12,000, and we could reuse that equipment over time if we have any more engineering studies that need to be done, which I imagine we probably do. And resolution number three, Chad Bowman, we're hiring him on the 2nd of September, is that correct?
Just starting to hear.
Okay. Why did it take eight years for us to get a planning director?
I would say primarily we did the pay was not correctly, addressed the pay.
Actually didn't have a director.
Director, but we had a manager position. That's right. We addressed the pay for the manager position in 2021, had some success, but not to the level we needed, and we created the director position last year.
And a few in the fourth between.
But that's why, I mean, we fixed it.
Okay. It only took us eight years under your tenure and then four years under this body's tenure to make that happen.
And, sir, I don't do it to hire, that's the council.
Could you urge the council and perhaps a planning commission who's got a longer tenure than you to find some people to do that job?
I don't get them to vote. Our job is on.
Okay, we'll talk about that, we'll talk about that later then, sir. Goodbye.
All right, moving on. Approval of monthly bills, approved July 2025 monthly bills. Motion by Mr. Pike, second by Mr. McMasters. Roll call.
Mike.
Aye.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
July 2025 monthly bills approved by zero. Approval of minutes, I think separately versus August 4, 2025, 5:00 p.m., council work session. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lynam.
Aye.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
August 4, 2025, 5:00 p.m., work session approved 4 to 0 with one abstention. Next is August 4, 2025, council meeting, motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lynam.
Aye.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
August 4, 2025, 6:00 p.m., council meetings approved by zero. Resolution 25192, approved request for restaurant retail liquor license for La Tera Zita LLC at 2614 Highway 31 South, Keter, Alabama 35603.
This is a new restaurant, meet met our criteria.
All right, this is a public hearing. We'll have been to public hearing now if there's anyone here that would like to speak on this item. All right, seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider this public hearing closed. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lynam.
Aye.
Pod.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25192 approved by zero. Next we have our weed abatements. We'll take these as one. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Alan, anything of note?
No, they're just routine.
All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Lynam.
Aye.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Weed abatements approved by zero. Resolution 20, sorry, Resolution 25207, approved Fourth Avenue Traffic Signals Engineering Proposal for Morel Engineering.
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is a resolution to do a warrant analysis on the two traffic signals along Fourth Avenue. After Mr. Faroki's talking about getting counters, yes, we have counters that we do our speed studies with. This is much more involved than just counting the number of cars. The turning directions and everything else, plus doing the warrant analysis through with a traffic engineer to tell us whether or not they're actually needed, and if they're not, what is, what would be the required need for those intersections.
Second by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion?
I should say, thanks for getting this on, this came through for us, actually a couple of different residents, they traveled through there, should report to see.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lynam.
Aye.
Pod.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25207 approved by zero. Resolution 25208 approved New South for Kerry Matthews Architectural Services.
Yes, so there's no change, but this group, New South, has worked with our other retained consultant, OMI, or Mr. Oger, to evaluate and see what needs to be done to bring this billing up to existing building code standards.
Motion by Mr. Pike.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Lynam.
Aye.
Pod.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25208 approved 4 to 1. Resolution 25209 revised appointment of director of planning Chad Bowman.
Rochelle Sanlam, HR, the resolution self-explanatory.
Motion, second. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lynam.
Aye.
Pod.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25209 is approved by zero. Next council work session will be held on Monday, August 25, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Next regular council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 2, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. Anything else from directors?
I wanted to make a note that this Thursday, August 21, at 8:30 a.m., they'll be having public testing of the DS 200 machines down at the Narco or MCAT Building located at 401 Second Avenue, and public is invited for those at lots of the.
Anything else? All right, we'll move to our public comments portion of the meeting. We have two folks signed in versus Mike Faruki.
Okay, earlier we talked a little bit about ethics. And there was a vote that was held. First off, let me make absolutely clear that this is not about a sum of money that I'm going to be discussing. It is entirely about ethical standards in how our city government has been operating. July 28, three people were in attendance and voted two to one to approve Skip Thompson to the Municipal Utility Board. That would be you, Mr. McMasters, you, Jacob Lynam, and Mr. Jackson.
I believe Mr. Jackson actually abstained.
He did, yes. So it was two to one, correct.
It was two to zero with one abstention.
Right. Now.
I want to make sure you had your votes correct.
I appreciate that.
Sometimes you don't.
Thank you for that unsolicited comment, but.
It was solicited.
On the 28th, who, Jacob?
You.
On the 28th, you voted two to one with one abstention to approve Skip Thompson. On June 30, Skip Thompson provided $500 to Mr. McMasters, so this is less than a month prior to it. And Skip works for which company, Jacob?
He is an owner of Third Mark.
Right.
And several.
Right. And Mr. Stratton Orr provided $250 that same date to Mr. McMasters' campaign he works for.
He is an owner of lots of companies, but Third Mark.
Third Mark, yeah, exactly. Mr. Britt Sexton provided $500 to, again, which company?
To what company?
Yeah, does he work for?
He doesn't work for.
Does he own a company?
He owns lots of companies.
Is he associated with Third Mark? Because he's listed on the website.
He's not an owner.
Is he listed, he's listed on the website?
But he's not an owner.
Okay. Thank you for that non-clarification.
He doesn't work for the company, he's not an owner.
If he, is he on a board? Does he provide services to?
Not directly.
Okay. So he could, in fact, provide some indirect support. Mr. Lynam provided $500, and you work for. Mr. Ladner provided $500, and you work for, again, Third Mark. And your brother also provided $125.
What does it matter who donates to my campaign?
Because you're.
Well, I didn't vote.
No, I told you, I didn't do it.
I've been here for two years.
It has.
I'll tell you what, Tom.
Yeah.
Personally.
May I continue?
I'd love to do it.
Okay. As mentioned, it has nothing to do with the money. It has to do with the ethical standards, because you voted for him. You should have abstained.
Hey, hey, you want to talk about ethical standards?
You should have abstained.
How many campaign violations did you rack up?
How many campaign violations did I, I don't know. You tell me.
Well.
How many?
So you're talking about.
You reported me before.
Honor and integrity, so and transparency, so why don't you let the people know how many you have?
Well, I'll tell you what, when the investigator who asked me whether or not I did have a campaign violation, and I provided my input, and she said, "Okay, that's enough for me to deny this," then that answers your question.
And the magical.
My question to you, sir, though, is, why didn't you abstain?
Why would I abstain? Are you questioning?
Because you are being provided money for the company that supports that individual's position on the municipal utility board.
Are you questioning Skip Thompson's ability?
Your ability to vote, your ethical standards in voting, that's what I'm questioning.
It's rich, you questioning anybody's ethics.
Okay. Any day of the week, Mr. Mcmasters, I am more than happy to respond to that in open forum on Thursday.
Respond to it now, I'm here for it.
Right. You can wait until you need it, all right?
Hey, Greg, why you here?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank you. We've been working now for months along Fourth Avenue with the CSX properties and trying to get some attention. Those properties cleaned up, the property that belongs to CSX that leads to our downtown from 11th Street all the way down to 5th Street. It looks horrendous, except for we have business owners like you who go across the street from their property in most CSX rightways. Thank you for being a good business owner.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
And you did not contribute to my campaign.
No, I didn't know you was going to say this, no. Thank you.
Counsel, thank you for allowing me a brief moment to give truth and clarity to previous comments made within these walls. Purpose of this or any other town council meeting should not be allowed to be used as a stepping stone for anyone's political gain, much less as an opportunity to attempt to destroy another one's integrity. Comments that neither can be supported or that would not allow an opportunity for rebuttal are just an act of cowardice when one is not willing to address the one being accused to validate information being shared in public. The subject of ethics has been introduced in this council as being violated within the political realm. The one that asked that the council be responsible for ethics of those running for positions with indicators should then be subjected to the same scrutiny. It should be that one that would attempt to force a level of ethics on another would themselves have proven a high moral level of integrity. But as stated in this room and also put to print, not half-truths but blatant lies, the integrity of that one would be a moral level that is not deserved to represent any council of any city. A recent comment posted on the Decatur Daily Facebook page and also stated in its council chambers, Mike Faruki, the author of these comments, that are, again, are not half-truths.
Be careful about going after these.
But malicious lies that have to resist, have no reason to have been posted for any reason but to satisfy the ego. As stated, his 12 years uncompensated term includes his collusion in approving this disaster in Burning Tree with a planned subdivision that hired his company to run the electrical conduit to set the record straight. My company, DCEC, was hired as a subcontractor by the developers of the Burning Tree project to perform the electrical installation of infrastructure for the electrical utilities. DCEC was not involved in the planning of this development. TBW was not in any shape, form, or fashion privy in the negotiations between contractors and the developer. Material for this project was purchased from at least four different vendors. Yes, TBW did provide some material for this project, but on a competitive bid level with absolutely no collusion. Furthermore, the developer of the Burning Tree project had no contractor or supplier in their pockets on this project. Yes, there are issues on this project due to confusion between the developer's intent and what the City of Decatur understood. Those issues were not orchestrated by anyone involved with the City of Decatur. City council meetings are ethically not the forum for political speeches disguised in lies, much less free airtime for one to display their campaign banners. Should my comments today be proven to be false with an attempt to further my own personal agenda while attempting to cowardly destroy another, then I would ask that you never allow me to address this forum again. Thank you.
All right, anything else from council, players? We are adjourned, thanks.